We're ready to begin our meetings. We begin first with the Seminole Airport Authority, roll call today.
Stephanie Lambert. Bill Watlin.
Here.
Tim Hoplin.
Here.
Dee Patterson.
Here.
John Kramer.
Here.
Chris Anson.
Here.
Larry Church.
Here.
Cory Crabtree.
Here.
Shane Fisher, we have a forum.
Are there consideration and action of the consent agenda?
Second.
Roll call.
Bill Watlin.
Yes.
Tim Hoplin.
Yes.
Dee Patterson.
Yes.
John Kramer.
Yes.
Chris Anson.
Yes.
Larry Church.
Yes.
Cory Crabtree.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Are there any appearances or petitions from the audience for the airport authority? If not, there being no further business, a motion to adjourn is in order. All favor. Close or order, meeting is adjourned, we move then to the Seminole Gas Authority, roll call.
John Kramer.
Here.
Tim Hoplin.
Here.
Dee Patterson.
Here.
Bill Watlin.
Here.
Cory Crabtree.
Here.
Stephanie Lambert. Larry Church.
Here.
Chris Anson.
Here.
Shane Fisher, we have a forum.
Consideration and action of consent agenda? Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call.
John Kramer.
Yes.
Tim Hoplin.
Yes.
Dee Patterson.
Yes.
Bill Watlin.
Yes.
Cory Crabtree.
Yes.
Larry Church.
Yes.
Chris Anson.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Are there any appearances or petitions from the audience for the gas authority? If not, then we need to have a motion to go into executive session to consider some.
We can recess it, Mr. Vice Mayor.
Sure, we can do that, call the other. Is there a motion to recess?
So moved. Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Close or do I stand and recess on that? That brings us into the Seminole Utility Authority, roll call.
Dee Patterson.
Here.
John Kramer.
Here.
Chris Anson.
Here.
Bill Watlin.
Here.
Cory Crabtree.
Here.
Tim Hoplin. Stephanie Lambert. Larry Church.
Here.
Shane Fisher, we have a forum.
Consideration, action of consent agenda?
Second.
Roll call.
Dee Patterson.
Yes.
John Kramer.
Yes.
Chris Anson.
Yes.
Bill Watlin.
Yes.
Cory Crabtree.
Yes.
Tim Hoplin.
Yes.
Larry Church.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Are there any appearances or petitions from the audience for the Utilities Authority? If not, we then move to current business, number one, consideration and possible action to approve the revised water service agreement with the Tri-County Rural Water District, number two, to provide water for the new Seminole High School in the Tri-County Service Area.
So, you, this is the second time you guys have seen this, we caught something before we actually presented the agreement to them with relation to the type of line that would be installed. Brad did a great job of resolving the issue and we've come to an agreement. I don't think there's any real hurt feelings over it, but there's definitely ruffled feathers, so. But, in the end, we got what we needed to have and this is, this is the correct agreement in front of you today.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call.
Dee Patterson.
Yes.
John Kramer.
Yes.
Chris Anson.
Yes.
Bill Watlin.
Yes.
Cory Crabtree.
Yes.
Tim Hoplin.
Yes.
Larry Church.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Current business, number two, an addendum to the agenda. Consideration and possible action to approve a quote from Jordan Contractors for emergency sewer main repairs from thirteen twenty-three Coolidge West to Rosedale Street in the amount of twenty-three thousand eight hundred and seventy-one dollars to be funded from the Water Sewer CIP Fund.
Motion to approve. Second.
Roll call.
Dee Patterson.
Yes.
John Kramer.
Yes.
Chris Anson.
Yes.
Bill Watlin.
Yes.
Cory Crabtree.
Yes.
Tim Hoplin.
Yes.
Larry Church.
Yes.
Motion passes.
There being no further business for the Utilities Authority, a motion to adjourn would be in order.
So moved. Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Close. So ordered, that brings us then to the regular meeting of the Seminole City Council, roll call.
Chris Anson.
Here.
Dee Patterson.
Here.
Stephanie Lambert. Larry Church.
Here.
Tim Hoplin.
Here.
Bill Watlin.
Here.
Cory Crabtree.
Here.
John Kramer.
Here.
Shane Fisher, we have a forum.
Please stand for the pledge of allegiance of the male and the female.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Consideration and action of the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second. Roll call.
Chris Anson.
Yes.
Dee Patterson.
Yes.
Larry Church.
Yes.
Tim Hoplin.
Yes.
Bill Watlin.
Yes.
Cory Crabtree.
Yes.
John Kramer.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Are there any appearances or petitions from the audience for the City Council? And now we move on to approvals and acceptances bids, number one, consideration and possible action to approve the low bid of fifteen thousand one hundred dollars from D and G Fence for the replacement of wrought iron fencing at Maple Grove Cemetery. This is a budgeted item to be funded from the Cemetery Perpetual Care Fund.
Is that just going to be on the south side?
Yes, sir.
What do we have planned for the winter?
Well, we're going to wait on direction from you guys, but currently, we're thinking just chain link. It's going to be really expensive to try to go that whole length with wrought iron, so. More than likely, it'll be chain link or some form of that. Do you have a suggestion?
No, I'd like to get with Mike on that, to, on this office, we'll talk about it.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call.
Chris Anson.
Yes.
Dee Patterson.
Yes.
Larry Church.
Yes.
Tim Hoplin.
Yes.
Bill Watlin.
Yes.
Cory Crabtree.
Yes.
John Kramer.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Number two, consideration and possible action to approve the purchase of two twenty nineteen type one Ford F four fifty-four by four ambulances at the state contract bid price of one hundred eighty-six thousand nine hundred ninety-five dollars each or three hundred seventy-three thousand nine hundred ninety dollars for both, less a trade-in allowance of eighteen thousand dollars for a net price of three thou- three hundred and fifty-five thousand nine hundred ninety dollars to be funded from the Series twenty-ten bond purchase.
You know, some of the new boxes are transferable.
Uh, yes, new boxes? Yes, sir, it'll be a complete new apparatus.
Just like we had that once you brought up here that.
No, no, these are actually the big, uh, we call them the nine-one, but the big square boxes on the back of it, it's the ones that we use for our nine-one-one calls, basically.
Take about a year?
Uh, yeah, as we spoke last month, we're, we're about ten to twelve months out from the time we placed the order.
Those are the heavy duty ones, Chief, like he was talking about?
Yeah, it's actually the truck chassis now.
Yeah.
We're going away from the gas V-ten, we're going with the Power Stroke. We feel like the Power Stroke is set up to where it's, set up to sit there in the auto, I mean, as a diesel compared to what we've got now with the, the gas and the V-tens, they don't make anymore, that's what we got now. We were told they're three hundred thousand mile vehicles and we're not going to even get close to that.
Talk us a little bit about the trade-in versus using them as backup.
We've got actually three ambulances that we're going to be trading in, it's the current two that we use now, Rescue One and Two, and then we've got an old one left over from Medicus. We're going to trade those in, they can reutilize that box, well, we can't use that box because we're going from a van chassis to a truck chassis. So we've got to redo, it's a completely different box on the back of it. The reason why we're not going to do the remount, which would be fifty thousand dollars cheaper per ambulance, we're going to be right back into the same situation we are now with a lightweight front end, a van chassis, running up and down the county roads, we're just going to wind up being in the same position we are now five years from now.
Is that good? The frame construction of the, the new ones?
Yes, uh, we're actually up, we're, we're putting a system on there, it's called a liquid spring system, should make the ride a little smoother in the back, but I can't guarantee that, it's Oklahoma roads. So, I know everybody complains about the rough ride, but we're trying to do everything that we can. But it is a.
Is there a way it could be configured to go on the old?
No. No. No, we've tried, but it's a complete different setup.
What's the life expectancy of the new ones?
Well, uh, we're hoping a ten-year span. I mean, we're setting at a eight, eight and a half now.
But the ones you're suggesting?
Yeah, that's what we're looking for, we're hoping that our last, uh, we're hoping that it's a two hundred thousand mile truck, if not more, being the decent cha- uh, the diesel motor, the heavier duty chassis, we're going with a four-wheel drive. Seventy-five percent of our roads are in the county, just like what we're going through now with the rain and the mud. When the snow comes, we're going to be, we're good to go.
Jerry, we do have a phone.
Yes, sir.
Motion approved.
Second.
Roll call.
Chris Anson.
Yes.
Dee Patterson.
Yes.
Larry Church.
Yes.
Tim Hoplin.
Yes.
Bill Watlin.
Yes.
Cory Crabtree.
Yes.
John Kramer.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Current business, number three, consideration and possible action to approve the revised water service agreement with the Tri-County Rural Water District, number two, to provide water for the new Seminole High School in the Tri-County Service Area.
Same thing, just, uh, we've got rates in one and, uh, multi-years on the authorities, so we want to go ahead and have both of Council and Utilities Authority.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call.
Chris Anson.
Yes.
Dee Patterson.
Yes.
Larry Church.
Yes.
Tim Hoplin.
Yes.
Bill Watlin.
Yes.
Cory Crabtree.
Yes.
John Kramer.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Number four, consideration and possible action to approve granting free wellness center memberships to the seven board members and their families that serve on the Board of the Seminole Community and Wellness Facilities Authority.
Motion to approve. Second.
Roll call.
Chris Anson.
Yes.
Dee Patterson.
Yes.
Larry Church.
Yes.
Tim Hoplin.
Yes.
Bill Watlin.
Yes.
Cory Crabtree.
Osteen.
John Kramer.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Number five, consideration and possible action to approve the city addendum to the addition of city to deputation agreement for law enforcement, an agreement with the Seminole Nation of Oklahoma for the purpose of providing for cross-deputation of law enforcement officers employed by the Seminole Nation and the City of Seminole's Police Department. And, uh, just let. Chief here?
Yes, these are up to go.
Okay, what this would be, we've, we've done it in the past with Seminole Nation Light Horse Police, where they've been cross-deputized to answer calls with us. This is going to be a little bit different in that, in the sense that we're also going to be cross-deputized with them. So we'll have a Seminole Nation Light Horse Commission. Uh, some of the officers throughout time will also get a BIA Commission. Um, some of our officers will, but the, the biggest benefit for us is we're, we will now be having Light Horse will be able to back us up on calls and assist us on calls. If we're busy, which, you know, a lot of times we have a minimal amount of officers, I say minimal, I mean, that's probably a wrong way to put it, but we, we have a limited amount of officers and then we'll get just packed up with calls that will give us somebody else to take those calls for us. So that, you know, we don't have to be on every call, we don't, sometimes we don't have to stall a call, you might, I say, here again, wrong, wrong verbiage, but we don't have to be, respond to a call in ten minutes, we can have somebody respond to a call, we can ask Seminole Nation, hey, can you take this call? And they can go respond to the call right now.
Just to go through, can you go on the Indian Territory and make arrests without them?
Yes.
And they can without you?
Yes.
And I would simply add, this matter's been discussed in the bands of the Seminole Nation, and certainly among our band, the Tuskegee Argyle and others, this is greatly desired and greatly needed because the previous one has been canceled.
That is, that, that's correct. You know, we, we have some broad, we're building a great working relationship that, years ago, we had a great working relationship with the Light Horse. And I was, I was part of that working relationship and that over the last few years has gone away. With, with the administration that's in there now, and our administration, we're rebuilding that relationship. For all of us, it, it's a great thing, you know, Seminole Nation, there's times they'll have one or two Light Horse officers on shift at a time. You may have somebody in, you know, in Wewoka and they'll get a call, you know, to some property here in Seminole or just outside of Seminole, maybe even I-40. And they're, you know, thirty, forty minutes out and it's a violent call. This way, we can respond for them and, and not have to worry about, you know, as a tribal member on tribal property, now we're, you know, we're, we're fully protected in that.
Plus, there's some resource sharing that we're able to do. I think we've worked out a memorandum of agreement with the, with the Light Horse on, uh, with their BCR and, uh, being, have access to tribal tags so that we can run tribal tags and vice versa, that's going to help. And it's just generally just an officer safety issue as well as this, to protect the citizens, give them a little bit more protection, it's a good thing. And, you know, to pass the, we just have to have their agreement in place, uh, to, to make it legal, so.
To me, one of the biggest things is it shows, it shows the citizens of Seminole, the citizens of Seminole Light or Seminole Nation, that we're together, that we're all on the same team.
Motion to approve.
Second, uh, roll call.
Chris Anson.
Yes.
Dee Patterson.
Yes.
Larry Church.
Yes.
Tim Hoplin.
Yes.
Bill Watlin.
Yes.
Cory Crabtree.
Yes.
John Kramer.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Number six, consideration and possible action regarding two options from Suttonlink regarding City of Seminole telephone and internet services.
Two options, uh, excuse me, just one second, let me get there. Yeah. Well, they're, they're actually different a little bit in that we get a modem on one and the other one we don't. Chief Baker, you want to, you want to start us while I get to?
Yeah. Uh, so what, what we've done is, uh, probably about a year and a half, maybe two years ago, we changed our phone system, saving some money. We went to a wireless phone system, wireless internet. So what happens is when the storms come through, we lose connectivity, PD's down, FD's down, City Hall's down. So, we kind of branched out, tried to find some people that wanted to partake and play with us and get us on a different system. We checked with Suttonlink, we checked with, uh, OneLink. Suttonlink came in, we had fiber optic running in front of the nine-one PD-FD complex, we've got fiber optic at City Hall. Uh, we've got fiber optic around town, that Suttonlink we're able to latch on to, give us a hundred megabytes per system up and down. It's a little more reliable system, it's underground and we're not having to deal with the Wi-Fi side of it. And we felt like Suttonlink being a part of our community, we wanted to try to help those guys out in return, they can help us. We reached out to them, we've had probably four or five meetings with them. Uh, they came in, they created plans. They're going to eat all the cost of establishing all the connections to all of our well sites, FD, PD, nine-one complex, City Hall. I mean, everywhere that we make a connection, they're going to eat that cost.
Including laying the fiber?
Yes, including lay, laying the fiber. The two options that you have, the first, one option is a little cheaper than the other, the difference in those two, when we spoke to them the first time, it was we wanted internet service at City Hall, the nine-one complex. The second agreement has internet or modem access at the other facilities, which would be the cemetery, um, Public Works, Street Department, uh, all those facilities that currently have internet access at their facility now. So, that's the difference in the two, I think there's a little bit of money change, not a whole lot. But that's kind of where we're at with this process.
The important thing is, what we're backing out of is the service area, you guys bought us new phones and we went with the Nobel on the service and, and RSI. The phones are still going to be great, they'll work just fine, so we're going to keep the phone system, it's just the, the connectivity that would be changing. So, here's where we're at, um, we've got the two, and I, I'm going to go ahead and recommend that we go with the, the forty-four nine, uh, four thousand four hundred ninety-four eighty-five and the seventeen, uh, one thousand seven hundred forty-nine eighty-five bid. But, what I would like to do, since Sharon is, has been ill for the last few days, I'd like for her to review this one more time, so, in your motion, if you choose to make it, I'd like for it to be approved, that contract contingent upon final staff review. So that I get Sharon's eyes on it and make sure that everything that she sees is compatible, because she was the one that was involved with AT&T and Nobel changeover, so. One final set of eyes on this would be helpful.
I didn't read the fine print on that, but that's another one of those, this is a thirty-six month contract, and is there an option for the city in this? You know, what's the cancellation fees, I know they do things a little differently than some businesses.
I hadn't looked at this, uh, I honestly have not looked at the Suttonlink contract, but the, if we approve it out of the City, uh, Council, then we can't obligate anything past the current budget year for one year anyway. So, by operation of law, I cannot stand, they typically put those municipal clauses in there. So, if you want to go ahead and pass that again, subject to staff review with that particular clause or addendum to it, I'll be happy to make sure it gets on there.
If they won't abide by that, we'll bring it back to Utilities Authority, just have you review it again.
I'm going to make the motion by what Brad said.
Got that, Jay?
Are you got any money with the other company for cancellation of any kind of contract that we currently have with Nobel or?
So. Nobel, so I'm in.
Let me just interject, we had a motion, we need a second and then we need to come to Cory for the question. Is it? Second, second, all right, now, go ahead.
So, I'm in negotiations right now with, uh, AT&T. There's a, a law firm on the west coast that have, they've, we've been going back and forth and, you know, there's been an issue about a passed due bill that we may owe AT&T. Uh, the reality is, is that when Nobel took, uh, over our internet-based system, uh, we, Nobel was supposed to notify them. And, we know that Nobel, uh, had the information and we eventually ended up having to do it ourselves because the person on the other end apparently wasn't doing their job, that person's no longer there. We, there is a dispute on what we owe and, uh, I anticipate we'll probably get it favorably resolved. Right now, we're just going back and forth, doing a bunch of information gathering. I can say that Sharon has extensive documentation where the city did everything on our part, uh, to notify, uh, Nobel and to put this monkey on Nobel's back. And, they have acknowledged, all but acknowledged, that was their mistake. But, we've still got to, got to work through that, so, I can't give you any information as far as money or, it's not, I won't say it's not that much, but it's, I think it's just a year's worth of bills and then Plexar was the system that we, Plexar, which is the service.
You recall the, the total amount, the AT&T?
I can't.
I'm going to guess with you, just so I don't, you don't leave here without. As I recall, the original AT&T was like thirty-three thousand requested. So, uh, they came back and said, hey, if you'll pay the, pay eleven thousand, we'll, we'll be gone. Well, our position at the time was, we still believe that it's Nobel's issue and their only excuse is, well, she's no longer here. Well. They were still representing to us that they were canceling the AT&T, they handled it all. It was supposed to be a turnkey job, so, uh, I'll tell you that it's going to be somewhere, I feel strongly, it'll be somewhere between eleven thousand and thirty-three thousand, if we have to pay it.
If we have to pay it, that's the key.
It's a bad route.
By heart.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
I have a question, Vice Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Uh, the numbers that you were quoting, is that, is that the monthly charge? The, the four thousand? The, what, the numbers that you were saying on the two given plans?
The four thousand was the setup charge and then it was seventeen hundred a month, wasn't it?
Right.
I got you.
That's.
Yeah, we're, we're saving.
We used around sixty thousand dollars a year on, on funding this.
Yeah, either way, we're still saving a big time over what we were with. AT&T's Plexar was terrible.
My phone bill's twelve, thirteen thousand a year. See, my phone bill is twelve, thirteen thousand a year. Don't sound like a whole lot to me. For a whole city.
Good motion and second, or are there any other questions?
I, I have a question. Seriously, okay, so we've talked about, about the cherry clause, we've talked about being this contingent upon staff review.
Yes.
What is the actual motion?
Motion is to approve the bid that Steve recited, subject to staff review and inclusion of the municipal budgetary clause, correct?
Yeah, that sounds good.
Well, I appreciate it.
That's what I thought you said.
Can I, can I clarify one thing that Tim asked about? Yeah, the forty-four ninety-four ninety-five is the monthly charge, the seventeen forty-nine eighty-five is the setup fee. So, we had them flipped.
And that's for all, that's for all?
Everything.
The inclusion of what he was talking about?
Everything.
I moved to approve at first that point.
Well, yeah, motion is on the table already. And we just had the discussion, so we're ready for roll call.
Yes, sir. Chris Anson.
Yes.
Dee Patterson.
Yes.
Larry Church.
Yes.
Tim Hoplin.
Yes.
Bill Watlin.
Yes.
Cory Crabtree.
Yes.
John Kramer.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Number seven, discussion of a plan to provide the public with access to a swimming pool during the summer.
Okay, uh, last summer, I know you guys were frustrated, as were we, with regard to not being able to, to get some, uh, swimming area for us, for our kids and families. We did all we could to get the Grissow Mansion, uh, in the end, we could not get that secured. We've opened dialogue with the college about perhaps using their swimming facility over the summer. Roughly, we're talking about going from Memorial Day to, uh, basically August the first. In this agreement, the discussion so far, and it's not been reduced to paper, I wanted to get in front of you, and that's why it's only listed for discussion. I wanted to get in front of you to talk a little bit about, well, what has been discussed is that their, their swimming pool is in disrepair. It's still functioning okay, I don't know with a lot of heavy use how it's going to hold up. So, what I've been talking with Lana about is for the city to come with a lump sum upfront to do the heavy repairs that need to be done on that swimming pool in exchange for a five-year type deal. They seem very receptive to that. Uh, I think their pumps are in good condition. The heat and air system is in really bad condition. The piping itself under the swimming pool is in horrendous condition, in fact, it's so bad, we couldn't even open it to begin to inspect, so. Uh, I suspect what is going to happen is that we're going to have to, and I, I was hoping Mike would be here, because I don't know the terminology, but uh, in effect, what we do is we pull the, a, a heavy plastic film through the line and then we superheat it so that it expands and, and makes, basically makes the new water line, so that the corrosive pipe is now covered and not going to leak under pressure. I think that needs to be done, the heat and air needs to be replaced, the pool needs to be repainted and some interior work. Now, the bad part of this, even though they've got, uh, inside the swimming pool, they've got handicap accessibility. In other words, they can lower wheelchairs, but the restrooms are not. And I'm not necessarily wanting to get involved in that unless you tell me to. Uh, I wanna make the minimum improvements to get it functioning well. So that we can have a place for the next three to five years for our citizens to swim. And, uh, we're still in negotiation in terms of hours, but certainly it would be, you know, ten, ten o'clock would start lessons similar to what we had at the municipal pool. And then one o'clock to roughly six o'clock would be public swim. Uh, they're not entirely sure how it's going to work with the concession, because they have a concessioneer that's contracted to do everything on campus. So, uh, we've gotta get a waiver from them in order to do that, because we are going to be responsible for staffing. Uh, clearly, there's not a lot of college students that hang around there during the summer months. So, we're gonna be responsible for staffing. One of the things that our pool manager had always been able to count on was a minimal salary, but they kept the concession. So, that, that augmented what their salary was coming in at. So, we, we've got a lot to work on. I would like your feedback. Is this a direction, even though it's an indoor pool? Uh, I think we can maybe have a sunbathing area out there for them, but is this the direction you wanna go? Or is it, nah, not really interested?
I lived in Norman. I don't know what the city's arrangement was, was OU, but the OU pool was accessible to the public. And it worked really well. It was, uh, I mean, it was nice to be able to utilize their swimming pool. Other than that, I guess we could elect to build a pool in our city attorney's backyard.
Liking, liking that idea.
So, I, I, at this point, I, you know, I'm favorable. I'm, I'm thinking that's a, a good thing to look at.
Okay, alright, I'll continue the discussions then and maybe refine what it is that we're going to be repairing. Get it into a, a word document that you guys can review. And then if you can think of anything that I left out, then-
You have any idea about expenses on that? What the-
We talked about trading repair expenses for rental of the pool.
Yes, yes. In other words, we would rent the pool for this amount, but those, those have to go to repair of the facility. So, uh, you know, I would rather not tip my hand and give you an amount yet. I just think that we've gotta get some prices first. I don't know how much that, I'm calling it pipe bursting. That's not the right term. But, the, the pipe fixing is, uh, you know, it's, it's not gonna be cheap.
Well, I'm, I'm sure it's not.
And, and the heat and air system, it, it stays on twenty-four seven. And I, I don't know that that's the best design, but we're gonna get it looked at and see if somebody can come up-
And that's because it's indoor.
Yes, uh-huh, and the, and the moisture, you gotta, you gotta keep it. They call it makeup air. There's gotta be a lot of makeup air put into that pool.
Question I have, uh, are they gonna take care of the maintenance, or is that something that's gonna be worked out?
Yes, no, they're, they're gonna continue with the maintenance of the pool. Now, there may be some discussion about, uh, us checking chlorine levels and things like that. That would probably be something that we would have to do.
But they would pay for it, the chlorine?
Uh, that's, that's still negotiation and part of the- I can't imagine that they would want us to pay the chemical cost and then they use it on off-hours, so. We're gonna have some he- heavy traffic, which uses more chemical. So, but, that's part of what we're going to pay premium for. In the, in the meantime, um, you know, the, the deal is still out there. We, if we wanna build our own municipal pool, you guys heard it from the presenter, we can have him back at any time. Uh, our pool guy says that you're looking at four million to build an average pool, five to six if you want to make it some, you know, kinda destination point. You know, I, my only, I'm not really discussing this a ton with Jay, but I, I know we don't have that kinda income to carry that kinda debt load. My only thought on this would be that we would have to go to a, a general obligation bond through property tax. Uh, similar to what we did to build the hospital clinic. And, uh, to give you an idea, we're, we haven't had that, gee, when did we retire the clinic bond? Yeah, we haven't had a GO bond on for five years. That's very, very unusual for municipality. Uh, almost all municipalities, you know, I don't know, Broken Arrow has, I, I think like forty-three mills, uh, on theirs for city improvements. Ranging from streets to wellness centers to other things. So, uh, we've, we've wanted to keep, because of our sales taxes is high. But we wanted to keep our, our tax load on our citizens very low. But this is one of those amenities that a community really kinda needs to have. It's just kind of a bare minimum deal, uh, to keep a swimming pool in your, in your deal, in your arsenal. Thoughts on that? Nobody wants a swimming pool?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Well, you could use my lake.
We have a lake, we have a pond behind the wellness center. Uh, the health department doesn't really like us to say that. I'm sorry.
What kinda percentage does that look like on property taxes? Like how much would it raise? You know, a hundred dollar bill.
Chris, I'm sorry, I'm not prepared for that, uh-
And cause that's what people really wanna know.
Yeah. As always, it, it really depends on how many years you're gonna span it. You know, if you're gonna go for a twenty-year, twenty-five-year bond, then, you know, I think you could probably get in for eight to eleven mills, an increase. But, I, I'd wanna review that before I give you a final answer.
Cause hopefully that pool would last much, much longer than twenty-five years and people would be willing to do it.
Well, this pool will last for, what, almost seventy years.
Yeah, long time.
So, uh-
And we put a lot of money in if this lasts ten or fifteen years too.
Tremendous amount of money, yes we did.
Okay, that brings us into reports. The mayor is not here because he is attending his mother's funeral today. We do have a plaque that will be presented to him, and I want to read that into the record. Presented to Dr. Shane Fisher, appreciation for serving fourteen years as mayor and four years as a city council member. Your city employees, citizens, and colleagues wish you to know, your dedication to a life of service has been extraordinary. Your gift for turning dismal situations into prosperity has put Seminole on a path that few rural communities will ever achieve. Simply put, the people of Seminole are indebted to you for your public service. Your determination, compassion, and brilliance as a leader have positively impacted thousands of lives. And your impact will continue to be felt for decades. Thank you for giving of yourself so selfishly, the people of Seminole. And this will be presented to him. City manager.
Alright, uh, I wanna invite everyone to a very, very important event. Especially, uh, I, I don't know, I think we could probably have four or five thousand people there tomorrow at eleven-thirty a.m. One of our very own is being crowned, I'm sorry, promoted, uh, to Colonel. Brad Carter is going to be a full bird Colonel tomorrow at eleven-thirty at the Wellness Center. And, uh, this is a big deal. It really is. I'm, I'm joking with him, but it's a huge, huge deal. It's a huge responsibility that he's taking on and we're very grateful for his service. So, eleven-thirty tomorrow, I hope everybody shows up. It's gonna be a pretty cool deal. Uh, we've got a lot of, a lot of the top brass is coming in to, uh, to be involved in this. And hopefully, we can show them how proud we are of, of all of them. So, please make time to be there. Wanna, wanna mention one more time about the roundabouts that we are considering. Uh, we're gonna take this to the planning commission very soon. We've got, the engineering firm is working it up. Uh, we had a little bit of a pause. Uh, the roundabouts, I'll describe it one more time. I know you guys have heard it so much, you're kinda tired of it. But, uh, we're looking at the corner of Strather and Bourne Boulevard. So, right there by the cemetery, uh, where the old USA Independent Tank area was, we're looking at putting a roundabout there. The purpose for doing that is, once the improvement is made on Bourne and Broadway, when the, uh, when the Department of Transportation finishes the overlay, which by the way, will begin on May the fifth. And as they always do, they'll begin it on April fifteenth and make me look like a ridiculous. But, right now, they're telling me May the fifth. Uh, and once they leave there, they are turning that back to the city. And they're gonna say, here you go, this is now a city street. You guys are responsible for all of the repairs. Well, we don't have the two-point-five to three-point-seven million dollars to overlay that road any, like ODOT does every four or five years. We must take the heavy truck traffic off of that street. Because we don't have the resources to overlay it again, to redo that. So, the best thing we can do is put a, a traffic feature in. Uh, the other option is to put stop signs every three-hundred-and-fifty to five-hundred feet, uh, on Bourne Boulevard. And I run late to meetings at the college all the time. I don't think I can handle that many stop signs. So, it would, in my opinion, would be better to put one or two roundabouts that are, they're a nice feature anyway for a community. Uh, it'll set us apart, be a little bit different, and it will be too tight of a turn for a truck to make. So, that will, will, of course, we'll have it all signed and tell them no through trucks, et cetera. We've made provisions for Ronnie Allison, Blue Wave Boats, and, and Paul Levy Pipe, uh, to be able to get their trucks down Ideal. You'll notice that we've already done the, the, the microoverlay going down Ideal Street, south, going off of Bourne Boulevard. So, uh, this thing's fixing to take an uptick in activity. More than likely, we will have a public hearing at the planning commission when our engineering is ready. ODOT has already been advised of our plan. Okay, they threw a tantrum. But, what they told us was, you guys don't wanna do that. It's gonna be a nightmare. You guys need to talk to Ardmore. They're, they're taking one out. Uh, it's just not gonna work. So, I've never heard anything negative from other city managers. So, I called Ardmore City Manager and, uh, we got to visit. He said, Steve, I, I don't know what you're talking about. He said, yeah, we're taking it out to make it bigger, cause we love it. So, I, you know, I think this is the best option that I can see. And, and it's possible we could look back in four or five years and say, yeah, we're gonna have to expand that. It's not working. We can't get the trucks to keep from running right over the top of it, even though there's a six-foot concrete wall. Uh, you know, there, I, I'm gonna tell you that this is, there is a risk. We may come back and say, this is a bad idea. But, everything that I can do and research that I've done says that it'll work. You know, it'll be a good thing. And, uh, if we can make it a scenic, uh, deal and, and turn that corner, once we get the grant for the, the Blue Wave Boats expansion and to the Independent Tank, that corner's gonna look a lot different, friends. It goes from our worst eyesore to something that we can all be proud of. So, I'm excited. You know what? Uh, I just watched a video a while ago about a drug bust that our police department did. Uh, Channel Five, I think it's on Channel Five News tonight. So, if we get you home before ten o'clock, you'll see on Channel Five News about a drug bust that our guys did out here at the Executive Inn. And, uh, I can't tell you how proud I am of them, how far they have come, how, how proud I am of the leadership that Chief has given these guys. Uh, the training, the, the whole attitude of the department is at an all-time high, in my opinion. So, I'm really proud of them. If you get a chance, shake their hand, pat them on the back and, uh, and let them know. And as, as bad a time as Bryant Baker and his staff give our police department, they are top flight. They are top flight.
They have plenty of time to sleep and rest while they're working.
Oh, is that-
Well, the deal is, is we catch them on the side of the ocean.
Alright, alright, timeout. Technical foul. Alright, here we go. Alright.
Wow.
Uh, hey, you know, last night, uh, Jeff and I went to a, a ceremony that was incredible. One more time, uh, the cross-country state champions got their rings for their state championship last night. And they had a great ceremony. It was really cool. We're proud of those guys. And, man, that takes a, just a ton of work. You see them running around our Magnolia Park and I'm, I'm really proud of them. Congratulations once again. Maiden, Oklahoma is April fifth and sixth. Don't miss out on that. Want to welcome all our new restaurants. We seem to be getting several going on now. Uh, want to welcome them. The high school progress is going very well. Uh, it's a little bit slowed with all the mud. Uh, we've got an issue right now with ODOT being a little perturbed because of all the mud that's being tracked onto the driving surface and the parking that is being parked on the shoulder. Uh, so, if you hear that they're writing tickets, the highway patrol is writing tickets out there. The, the contractor has been warned. You know, I feel for him, but the fact of the matter is, there probably should have been a little bit more money put into the, the aggregate, the, the gravel that was put down there so that they could run in inclement weather, in inclement weather. So, that's going on. Uh, I mentioned May fifth is the target on Bourne and Broadway improvement. So, this is being done in two phases. The first phase will basically end where, uh, Milk Phillips, it, it'll go from the college to Milk Phillips. So, that is all being done with federal highway money. Uh, federal highway money will not touch the bricks. So, the rest of that from the bricks on past the bus station will be done with state money. And so, uh, that'll be done at, at a different time. But look for May the fifth. We're gonna hear, as we did on Highway nine during that improvement, we're gonna hear a lot of bellyaching. Because there'll be times when the whole street is closed and certain sections, so. Uh, but, it'll be a lot better when it's finished. I mean, a lot better. You know, uh, Brad and I went, uh, Chief and, and our code enforcement went and, uh, went to marijuana, uh, well, it was for several things.
Cannabis, cannabis.
No. No, cause it dealt with hemp as well. And I'm learning the terminology. Uh, but we went, uh, to a seminar and it dealt, some of it dealt with marijuana and, and the implications of what the state has in front of them to rewrite some of the rules versus what was on the ballot. And all of that seems to be coming out now. So, I think certainly by May, the end of May, when the legislature closes, that will have some final, uh, some finality to, uh, some of the language that we need. Uh, in the meantime, there's, there's a lot of discussion and some case law being developed. But, uh, you know, we've got in there, for example, we've got mention of can't be within so far of the church. Uh, right now, it looks like that cannot be upheld. Is that what you took away? So, there are pieces of our ordinance that are not enforceable. So, rather than trying to rewrite it every three weeks as cases start to come through the courts, I think our best bet is just to kinda be silent and wait on the final word to come out of the legislature. What was the name of the, she said, unity bill or something like that?
Yes. Unity bill.
Unity bill, okay. Unity Bill, okay. All right, so the Unity Bill is in place, or, uh, is in play at the legislature. I don't even know if it's been out of committee, or if it's going to the floor to vote. But, it is, and there, there's a lot of discussion surrounding it, both pro and con. But, we're not going to bring you a rewrite of the ordinance until we have a little bit better fact. Lastly, I just want to offer our condolences and prayers to the folks at Conawal Public Schools. Uh, what a terrible, terrible situation that is. And, uh, you know, I'm, I'm really proud of our guys that ran on the call, and I'm proud of the sheriff's office, and, and everybody to a person says how well the emergency services performed during that event. Our guys are having a little bit of a tough time with it, I've offered to have counseling with them, and, uh, and send them to counseling if necessary, so, uh, that's all I have, Bush Mayor.
City Attorney?
Nothing. Just nothing.
No words of wisdom?
I, I haven't, I haven't, I've been boxed in with your.
You're a Colonel.
Come on.
Oh, Ward one, uh, I'll pass and turn it to Larry.
Sure.
Well, I think the roundabout, thank you, Bush Mayor, I think the roundabout is, uh, ingenious. I think that is just absolutely the best idea to, uh, preserve that street that you could have came up with.
Thank you.
And for you civilians who don't know about bird colonels, now, this is serious. Uh, when you get to be a bird Colonel, you've got some stroke. It means that you are in line to be a general. It means that you're not being rifted out by being passed over. Uh, the, my, one year, four months, twenty-six days, five hours, and ten minutes of exposure to the military, uh, pointed out to me that in the officer rank, um, you get a lot of majors, and then they get passed over and go home. You get a, not as many, like birds, they get passed over and go home. But when you get to be a Colonel, I don't know when they get to go home. Uh, congratulations on that.
Thank you.
That's just, and, um, I'm, I, like you, I'm, I'm just proud of our police force as I can be. Chief, Chief Hansen's done a great job with that. With our police force, um, I just, uh, it just seems to improve every day. I'm glad of that. And of course, my favorite topic is that charity for the, for the poor. Um, for the most part, people don't care much about donating money to folks that they think could work and earn money on their own. Or providing, uh, some quality of base income for women and children. But until we, um, till women have parity in our society, and we don't really have a free society. We just don't, women still making, I guess the highest estimates are eighty percent of what men make. Um, many women are single mothers trying to raise their children on the, on their own. I don't know if you've ever looked at the cost of, uh, childcare, but it's prohibitive for most people to work. In the surest way, that has been demonstrated, to eliminate poverty in the world is to liberate women. So, just food for thought. Starts with girls, it's women and girls, single mothers and children, need our help.
I, I do have to comment something else on, on becoming a bird Colonel. The Seminole word for Colonel is hajjol, which also means drunk or crazy.
Don't tell my mom that, Bill.
Ward two, John Kramer. Ward three, Cory Craftery. Tim?
I have nothing, thank you.
Ward four, Chris Hansen? Dee Patterson?
Well, I might be defending out there if the cemetery is about to be done. That's a good deal, but we need to take a real close look at Bill Street. That street has really gotten bad lately. So, if you'll pass that on to Mike, I would appreciate it, so. And, congratulations to Mr. Carter. Your father would always tell you that I outrank you because I have time and credit.
That's right.
So, he'd be the boss. But that's quite an honor.
Thank you.
Proud of you.
That brings us in, we have an executive session. Do, do we want to take up the gas executive session first, or the city?
They're, they're together.
I know, they both have the. Can we? Do the city first? All right, there's a motion, uh, to go into executive session. Second? Sex favor?